Please rise for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the formal agenda, we'd like to ask David Weistig from the gap, Act of the Gap, to give us an update.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Following in the tradition of Lieutenant Colonel Waltman, who has gone on into retirement, we are committed at the Gap to continue our partnership with Lebanon County and come and give you updates as often as you want, and we appreciate this opportunity. This week, we have over sixty-nine hundred troops training on the Portionian Dam Gap. As we've said before, we are the busiest National Guard installation in the United States and well on the road this year to maintain that status. This is also the last week of the high-use period on the Gap. In other words, as units come in and pull their annual training periods, June and July are probably our two heaviest months, so we're pretty much peaked out with training. With that, we make some noise for our neighbors, so we'd like to give you an update of our live-fire activities. Today, we're going to be finishing up our live-fire mortar training, and next week, we're going to have some demolitions training, which will be very noticeable to our neighbors. And with that, we continue to have daily flight flights out of the Bureau Army Airfield, which is one of the busiest heliports in the United States Army, not only in the National Guard. We finished up with our annual butterfly tours in July, and just of note, we had just a hugely successful attendance. Well over five hundred people came to the beautiful Lebanon Valley to look at our regal butterflies and see really just a beautiful, beautiful part of the United States, so we were very happy with that. We're continuing with our gate closure plan, Phase Two Bravo, or B, took effect. What that is doing is channelizing the traffic that's coming on and off our installation to three points. It is still a post you could drive on, it's just confining it to three different areas to enter and exit post. They're mainly all side roads, they're going to, that closure, gate closure, is going to affect more people coming to work on the base than it will anybody else. So the major routes on post, Clement Avenue and Fisher Avenue are still open for you to come on and off post. One thing of note, Penda is very close to starting their bridge replacement on Route 443, which runs over the Gap. We're going to put, they're going to set up a temporary traffic light, we're going to divert the traffic over onto a pay portion of our tank trail while they're replacing that bridge, so we hope probably a three- to four-month completion on that. So we look forward to having that done and working with Penda. And pending anybody's questions, that's all we have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
David, thank you. Very happy to have you. I will consider the minutes as you've received by email and in your packets. Motion to second to accept the minutes of our last meeting. Any questions or additions or deletions? If you're not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. I will look for treasurer's report.
Good morning. We had receipts on July the nineteenth and twentieth of one million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars and zero two cents. That brings us to a total cash of three million, two hundred and nine thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Our expenditures this week are two million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-three cents. The tax claim is forty thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents, leaving us a balance of eight hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second. We were consecutive. Questions or comments? If you're not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you. Sally?
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. For personnel transactions, my resignations and terminations, I have Carter Price, full-time commercial officer, resignation effective August twelfth. Kimberly Weitzel, telecommunicator, resignation August twelfth, two thousand sixteen. Emily O'Hara, juvenile service provider, resignation effective July twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. Corinne Allen Singh, casual call developmental assistant, removal effective July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. And Kayla Levea, part-time developmental assistant, resignation July sixteenth, twelfth, two thousand sixteen.
I'll move to approve the resignations and terminations.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any comment or question? If you're not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under F M L A leave of absences, Anna Cordona, treasurer's, up to twelve weeks F M L A returned July seventh, two thousand sixteen. Brittany Stewart, probation, six to eight weeks unpaid leave of absence, effective July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. Victoria Kryner Eisenhower, Renova Center, up to twelve weeks F M L A, effective July first, two thousand sixteen. Kelly Richards, Controller's Office, one-year intermittent F M L A, effective July second, two thousand sixteen. And Louise Matthews, M D J Disner's Office, up to twelve weeks F M L A, effective July twenty-second, two thousand sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? If you're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Changes to status, transfers and promotion. Jamie Rukowski, Garehart, a promotion from probation Officer One to probation Officer Two, Assistant Supervisor in probation services at a three-dash-star, bi-weekly rate of one thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars and five cents, effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. Jessica Cruz, a promotion from M D J Clerk to Office Manager in M D J Capello's Office at a seven dash sixteen, bi-weekly rate of one thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents, effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. Michelle Lambert, a transfer from M D, as an M D J Clerk from M D J Wolf's Office to an Office Manager at M D J Disner's Office at a seven dash sixteen, bi-weekly rate of one thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents, effective August eighth, two thousand sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to approve those changes of status and other business there. Any questions or comments? If you're not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. So moved.
Other transactions, I have the Foundarian Clerk of Courts would like to hire Vinushka Gonzalezaiela as a general clerk C at the rate of eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-one cents bi-weekly, effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. District Attorney's Office would like to hire Alexis Jose Leola as a full-time booking agent at the rate of twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents per hour, effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. Children in Youth would like to hire Gregory Keller as a clerk type S two, the rate of eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents bi-weekly, effective August first, two thousand sixteen. And probation services would like to hire Kelly Valet as an adult probation officer one at the rate of one thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents bi-weekly, effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion to approve the hirings as presented.
Second.
Motion in second. Any questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Moving on the salary board, if there are no questions regarding these transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt these transactions on to salary board?
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve the salary board recommendations. Any questions or comments? If you're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Conference seminars mandated. I have Karen Hess, Elizabeth Ramsey, Casey Scholl, Kristen Smith, Tiffany Sherman, and Sarah Scherk from Domestic Relations would like to attend the two thousand sixteen Annual D R A P conference in Lancaster, September eleventh through the fifteenth. One thousand fifty-dollar total registration fee, lodging mileage, meals, parking reimbursement, mandated by D R A P. Constance Dowpower and Susan Christner from probation services would like to attend the Case Titan Forum in State College, September fifteenth. Thirty-dollar total registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by J C J C. Heather Kaufman from N H I D E I would like to attend the Regional Policy Forum in Harrisburg, August nineteenth. Mileage reimbursement, five credits mandated by Ogdell. Heather Kaufman, Danielle Gray, Leanna Schwartz, Kayla Conyers, and Rhonda Shoup from N H I D E I would like to attend the fourteenth Annual Cultural Diversity Workshop in Amell, August third. Two hundred and fifty-dollar total registration fee mandated by Ogdell. Richard Showers, Mark Herr, Carmen Cortez, Marjorie Urin, Sharon Gassert from Children in Youth would also like to attend the fourteenth Annual Cultural Diversity Workshop in Amell, August third. Two hundred and fifty-dollar total registration fee, mileage reimbursement, six credits mandated by D H S. Carmen Cortez from Children in Youth would like to attend the Drug and Alcohol Issues in Kattingerburg on August eighth and ninth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by D H S. Nicole Ruella from Children in Youth would like to attend the Sexuality of Children, Healthy Sexual Behaviors and Behaviors That Cause Concern in Kattingerburg, August sixteenth. Mileage meals and tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by D H S. Robert Southerly, the List of Flex from Children in Youth would like to attend the Valuing Diversity in Kattingerburg, August twenty-sixth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, six credits mandated by D H S. Robert Southerly, the List of Flex from Children in Youth would like to attend the Valuing Diversity in Kattingerburg, August twenty-sixth. Mileage meals, tolls, reimbursement, six credits mandated by D H S. John Schaaf from probation services would like to attend the D U I Instructor One Training in Mountuna, August eighth and ninth. Mileage reimbursement mandated by Penda. Terry Hilterbrandt from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the National Adult Protective Services Association Annual Conference in Philadelphia, August twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first. Lodging mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement mandated by the P D A. And Tatiana Meles and Margaret McDonough from the District Attorney's Office would like to attend the Search and Seizure Training in Harrisburg, August fifteenth. A hundred dollar total registration fee, mileage, I'm sorry, parking and meals reimbursement, three credits mandated by the P D C L D Board.
So moved.
First.
Second. It's been moved in second. I just have a question. Is the Diversity Workshop in Amell at the college?
It is.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. On to requested.
On to requested, I have Esther Charles, Karen Udnah, Holly Adams, Sandra Brinker, Amy Leitner, Emily Roydell, Kim Briggs, and Monica Boyer from N H I D E I who like to attend the fourteenth Annual Cultural Diversity Workshop, also in Amell, August third. Four hundred dollar total registration fee, no other reimbursement.
I'll make a motion to allow the folks to attend the Diversity Workshop from N H I D E I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no, so moved.
Michelle Adress, Lian Shank, and Jennifer Wright from Human Resources would like to attend the two thousand sixteen Annual SHIRT Conference in Kina Prussia on September eighth and ninth, with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second and approved the request of the Human Resources Department. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same.
Michael Anderson and Joel and Son from voter registration would like to attend the two thousand and sixteen Summer Conference of P A County Election Officials in State College, August fifteenth through the eighteenth. Four hundred and seventy-dollar total registration fee, lodging, mileage, meals, reimbursement.
Make a motion to send the folks from voter to the voter conference.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Just a comment to that. Yes, Jamie. Since we didn't plan on lodging for both, Michael's actually staying with his parents over by. I'm the number four. He's actually visiting and score points with his parents at the same time.
And saving money.
I'll favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. So moved.
Lee Glowacki from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the two thousand and sixteen Apprise Regional Updates Training in Harrisburg, September twenty-seventh, with mileage and meals reimbursement.
Second.
Motion in second to accept the Area Agency on Aging request. I'll favor the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Kim Susko from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the National Adult Protective Services Association Annual Conference in Philadelphia, August twenty-nine, thirtieth and thirty-first, with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
Motion to first allow folks to attend the Protective Services Workshop.
Second.
Motion has been made in a second. Questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Susan McCabe, Kim Susko, Deanna Bayshore, Pam Smith, Cindy Kleiner, Jane Lovetti, Adrian Laser, Michelle Long, and Lee Glowacki from Area Agency on Aging would also like to attend the fourteenth Annual Cultural Diversity Workshop in Amell, August third. Four hundred and fifty-dollar total registration fee and no reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to attend the Diversity Workshop at Lebanon Valley College. Any questions or comments? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Jessica Cruz and Millie Zidic from M D J Capello's Office would like to attend the M D J S Workshop in Lancaster on November eighteenth with mileage reimbursement.
Moved and we approve attendance at the M D J Workshop as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions or comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered.
Denise Holahan from M D J Disner's Office would also like to attend an M D J S Workshop in Kattingerburg on November tenth with mileage and tolls reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second to attend the workshop. Any questions or comments? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you very much.
Just introduce yourself to me. Daniel Seaman, Lebanon County Chief Assessor. I'm here with a couple of disabled veteran requests for exemption. One for Emmanuel Oliver at one twenty-seven South Eleven Street, and one for Burna Brook at three thirteen South Windle Avenue.
Make a motion that we approve the two disabled veterans exemptions as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, thank you. If I can plug in for the sixtieth Lebanon County, or Lebanon Area Fair, coming up, it's starting on Saturday, so.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Looking forward to this afternoon, too.
Yeah. We're excited about that one.
Thank you.
Got a few things in here. Provided a list to each of you from the Lebanon County Community Action Partnership of individuals who are interested in being Medical Assistance Transportation Program drivers. As you recall, throughout the year, we add these as they, as people become interested in signing up as a driver, but these would be the renewals for those that are, that we have on hand that are interested in doing it for the sixteen, seventeen year fiscal year. So gave you a list there of about thirty or thirty-five names. The rates for those were also provided to you, I think, on the back, for trips within city limits, out of city limits, Lancaster, Burke's, Cumberland, York, and so on. If you have any questions, rates or anything like that.
I'll move to approve the CAP request for M A T P drivers.
We have a motion and a second to approve the drivers for CAP. Any questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
We'll need to see if it's your own, this, your contract. I think you all received an email, or several emails over the last couple of months as from Andrew Heath, Andrew Heath from P A Growing Greener. They're putting forth an effort to obtain resolutions from as many counties as possible toward something they're calling Clean Water Counts. And so I have a resolution for Lebanon County here that is prepared, and essentially it talks about the need for clean water and clean streams throughout the Commonwealth and specifically in Lebanon County, and resolves that Lebanon County supports increased state investments to be made by the General Assembly and the Governor with dedicated, sustainable, and long-term funding sources such as the creation of a Growing Greener Three program, which will focus on water quality, recreation, restoration, and preservation.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second, the motion.
We have a motion and a second to support the resolution. Any questions or any comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
A number of liquid fuels applications, including one for the county, one of our bridges again. First being for Mill Creek Township, they are just providing, they're going to be conducting general maintenance on township roads, cost of that being four thousand dollars. Their allocation would be three thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars in Cornwall Borough. Also for general maintenance, the amount of five thousand dollars, their allocation would be four thousand, one hundred twelve dollars. Swatara Township would like to do line painting at a cost of nine thousand dollars, their allocation would be nine thousand dollars. Myers Town Borough for general maintenance, cost of three thousand, one hundred dollars, their allocation is three thousand, sixty-two dollars. Take those separate. Senator, do you have a motion?
I didn't hear what the county's bridge portion was, I'm sorry.
You didn't do that one yet.
Oh, you're doing it separate, okay. I'll second. I'll make a motion then.
I'll second. It's been moved in second to approve those allocations. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
We have, at our Sinar Road Bridge, County-owned Sinar Road Bridge, there's another debris accumulation there, which is a place where we've historically had this issue, and we'd like to get that cleaned away. It's a little more challenging than just going down the embankment, everything has to be done from above, not just because of stream requirements, but just access, literally access, there's no way to get down to the sides. It's a very, it's a very deep stream as it goes, it's not very wide, but it's very deep there, and so the debris accumulates from, you know, from the top and always at the bottom, I mean, it just blocks the whole thing. So anyway, we have an estimate of four thousand dollars to do this, and would like to encumber liquid fuels funds to get that cleared away as soon as we can.
And who's the contractor?
It would be Shewy Excavate.
I make a motion to approve disbursement of liquid fuels money from the county to clear the debris from the bridge.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Remind me where that is.
Sinar Road Bridge is if you, if you take Clear Spring Road, and if, or you cross over the railroad bridge, no, right after you cross over the railroad bridge, you can turn left on Sinar Road, right where the trucks would actually enter into the quarry. You continue another few hundred feet, and right as it crosses over.
Sorry, have you traffic issues?
No, it's, it's not a very high-volume road.
Any other questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And the last item I have would be a renewal of the lease with our tenant at thirteen-twenty Cornwall Road. This is the residential home that the county purchased a few years ago with the intention of a realignment of Wilhelm Avenue there, and in the meantime, while, while that's being designed and approved and funding being gathered for that, we have a tenant in there, very good tenant, low maintenance, doesn't, doesn't require much of us, and we'd like to renew that lease with him under all the same terms. It does give us a thirty-day out, so that's plenty of time. You know, we, I would actually let him know earlier, once we have an idea of when, when any work on a new intersection there would start. So the terms are for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. He's responsible for the electric, heating oil, snow and ice removal, and so on. The county, the landlord is water sooner, refuse later, so it's just, it's worked out very well.
Senator, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to accept those lease terms. Jamie.
Yes.
I understand what's planned is there, is there, did any talk about moving that house?
It's an option, yes, there has been. It's a good house, it's a nice house, you know, the challenges would be where it would go and how it might get there, and it's a brick structure, so it's not as flexible as a frame structure, so it would be, you know, the, yes, we talked about that.
We'd sell it, huh?
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd sell it.
Normal common traffic scenario there, so good. And maybe was the, the timing in your head?
I'm not sure yet, I mean, twenty eighteen, maybe. Yeah, we don't have that mapped out exactly, but the preliminary design of what the intersection would look like, I've seen on paper, but nothing, nothing, definitely. Utilities are going to be a challenge there, because if you've ever looked overhead, there are a lot of electric lines going through there, a lot.
I look at that as going to be a great improvement of that whole intersection issue there. Much like five points, you know, on the improvement of that. All right, any other questions or comments? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Okay. Jim.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Jim.
Jim Holtry with Children in Youth Services from here presents two contractors with due notification for detention facilities. One is North Hampton County Detention Facility. They're requesting rate for fifteen, sixteen, I'm sorry, sixteen, seventeen, is two hundred and fifty dollars a day, which is the same as was last year. Lancaster County Detention is going up to two hundred ninety-nine dollars, thirty-seven cents, which is a five percent increase, and the Secure Shelter is going up to one hundred eighty-two dollars, fifty-three cents, which also is a five percent increase. We recommend that the contractors with due notification of detention, so it is be approved.
I make a motion that we approve the new detention contracts as presented by Mr. Holtry.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you very much, Senator. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a good day.
You, too.
I'm the Lieutenant and Controller, also member and secretary of the Retirement Board, so this is a retirement board issue. As I passed around earlier in the week, a memo, the firm that monitors our retirement portfolio, Hessler, Topaz, Meltzer, and Check, they monitor their portfolio to see if there's any opportunities. Companies do things fraudulently, and we lose money in the retirement fund, and it's not to say that Stiefel or a money manager's bad. In this case, they identified a company that was in one of his portfolios called Gerdo S A. They were a company that has numerous steel mills and steel distribution plants in the United States, but they're based in Brazil. And what they did was they tried to defraud the government out of approximately four hundred million dollars in taxes. And when this was brought to light, the Securities and Exchange Commission filed a class action against them, and since we lost over a hundred thousand dollars in this And since we lost over $100,000 as a result of their wrongdoing, Kessler, Topaz has identified that we have a possibility to file as a plaintiff, as somebody who has lost funds as a result of their wrongdoing. And what they would need would be a word to one, approve a motion that we would file for such lead plaintiff status and that Kessler, Topaz would be the lead counsel. This would come at no cost or risk to the county or the retirement fund. Should there be a settlement, should we approve it, and Kessler, Topaz be our counsel. And there is a settlement, what they would get paid out of whatever the court approved part of the settlement would be. I had run it past Dave Warner, county solicitor, and he verified that there is no risk to the county, there is no cost. And one of the other things is, should the court in New York deem that we are lead plaintiff, one of the other highlights is, we would actually be, we would be part of the approval process for any proposed resolution to the litigation and final settlement agreement. Other counties in the past that have gone this route, I mean, I don't know if the court will deem us, there may be another fund, not necessarily county fund, but another fund in the United States, they deem their loss was more relevant than ours, but it's, we lost over $100,000, so any money we would recover would go directly back into the retirement fund. And if the court would decide we're not lead plaintiff, we just then fall back in with the regular class people and wait two, three, forty years on the line for them to send this notice of recovery. But this, one, it gives us an opportunity, if we're selected, to have a say in the settlement, whatever that may be, and it also puts us a little higher up the chain.
Now, can I vote for those, any one, one motion?
I think we could, I think we could approve to, appoint to.
Kessler, Topaz.
We could, I think we could do it as a one. To, we could do it as to one, file to be lead plaintiff in the class action litigation and appoint Kessler, Topaz as our lead counsel.
That's the motion, second. Any questions regarding this, John?
Do you know what fund manager it's listed in?
I think it may have been the Lebanon company, if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me on that. And they did nothing wrong. It just, it just was, it just was, that's just the name, they're based in the United States. They did nothing wrong, it was just something in his portfolio.
Recall this happening to us before.
This is the first time I can recall that we've, we've lost significant money like this due to a fraudulent. And I think Kessler, Topaz has been monitoring our fund for about five, six years now. This is the first time they brought to our attention that there was one, we, you know, the normal fluctuation up and down, you can't file against somebody, but I think this is similar to, I like it, to similar years ago when, what was it, the, what was the audit firm that, I can't remember who they were, that went out of business because they did a lot of fraudulent activity and there were people in five off the cap of it. It just, this is the first time that I know of that this has happened and in the past there's only been about five or six counties that have been in this situation.
Really, to put it in perspective, we're talking about $100,000.
$100,000. Due to a fraudulent, to fraudulent activity on behalf of that, on behalf of that company that had stopped.
I guess John's point was it's not, it doesn't put the integrity of the fund to the extent that it could, but the fund is large enough to, yes.
Right.
And I would think that, you know, this is something they wouldn't really want to, you know, pound on because of the system, with all those funds that are at stake, so.
And it looks like the Kessler, Topaz would get anywhere from 12 to 24 percent off the top before distribution of funds.
That would, that would not be off the total settlement, that would be off the settlement that the court would approve. I mean, say the settlement's $100 million, the court may say legal fees for both sides will be capped at $2 million. They could, they could apply for up to 20 percent of the plaintiff's app. But then again, since they're headquartered in Pennsylvania, this is going to be tried in New York, there's probably going to be other fees involved, so they probably won't.
Anything else? Not, good motion and a second. If all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved. Thank you. Now for the highlight of our meeting. This is twice in one month I've seen you, David.
Yes. That's a lot of pressure.
Would you like to introduce yourself in the new, three, two.
I'm David Schmidt, I'm the West Nile Virus Coordinator for both Lebanon and Lancaster Counties. And I'm here today with the Zika virus control grant that has been presented by the state. First off, I'd like to thank the Missionary Service for having me in here on such short notice, especially as we had requests coming in, and I know that the grant may have shown up in just the past couple of days here. So thank you for working in, really appreciate that. So this, this is a grant that is, it's separate from the West Nile Grant, which is usually what I'm in here presenting, either that or the Tiger Grant, but this is separate from both of those. It's a grant for $24,268.50. Some of these funds are going to be used in Lancaster County as per the West Nile Grant, we moved some of the funds over here for administrative purposes, but at least half of all these line items are, are going to be used in Lebanon County. So the Lancaster County grant looks a little slim and this one looks a little large, but that's just a matter of administrative details, since I oversee both counties. So there is, there is a few hours put in there for me, sixty hours put in there for me, a hundred for my, my seasonal worker. They're likely going to be doing a lot of the footwork on this, which is why they have more hours than even I do. Most of my work is going to be supplemented by the West Nile Grant. Five hundred miles, again, just for the footwork there, money for dry ice, for the baiting of traps, money for equipment to do the surveillance, control products to keep mosquitoes from, from being, from being able to breed in certain areas, money for office supplies, specifically a computer, which is why there's so much in there for papers, pens, ink cartridges, et cetera, I guess a computer falls under, et cetera. And the 10,000 for, for educational materials. We have some educational events that we're, we're planning and I'll certainly share more details as those plans kind of firm up, but right now it just, we are, we do have some things in the works to try to get rid of some mosquito habitat and get some information out to the public. That's what all the numbers are there, fairly self-explanatory, but I wanted to go over them. So I'd be happy to take any questions you have about this grant or the virus in general.
Just a general question about the virus in Pennsylvania. Can you give us an update as to?
Well, we have had some travel cases, but at this point, that's, that's all we've had and that's what we would expect to see. We don't have the primary vector of, of Zika virus in Pennsylvania, but we do have a secondary vector of the Asian tiger mosquito. These mosquitoes prefer urban habitats where they have some man-made containers they can breed in. And so we do see them, especially in Lebanon City here, and that's primarily where we're going to be focusing with our trapping efforts, is in the city, because that's where we see the populations of both mosquitoes and people, the heaviest populations, because like I said, this is a disease, it's a vector that refers to having the urban environment.
I know that boating, scuba diving, things like that, we were always warned that when you travel, be sure to dry out your equipment. For instance, a fisherman may have a bait bucket with some water in the bottom that doesn't get totally dried out. Are there any warnings to people carrying water-related sports gear that might carry the larva, nothing like that?
I haven't had anybody specifically, heard anybody specifically address that aspect, but it is something that's very good to think about because there are many pests that can be transported that way in face of mussels and things like that, that have been problematic. So it's a good thought. I haven't heard anyone say that about Zika. Probably the reason why is the, we're not so concerned about the larva carrying the virus, so just the adults. As far as we understand the life cycle of the virus, it require, it doesn't, it isn't passed on from the parent mosquitoes to the offspring. Again, that's, that's just as far as we understand. Before last year, very little research was done on the virus, just because it didn't seem like that could be over time. But, but yeah, it's, it's always good practice for any number of reasons, but I haven't heard anybody say that specifically about Zika, too.
Similar to West Nile virus, now you just said that they may take pool samples and determine that picture to determine whether there is any trace of West Nile on a particular sample. Is anything like that going to be done, not necessarily pools, but captures of mosquitoes to see if there are any mosquitoes that have the Zika virus and so on?
Yes, and I'll answer that question. First, I want to clear up, when, when I say pools of mosquitoes, I'm generally not talking about a swimming pool or a pool of water, I'm talking, I'm referring to the, the grouping of mosquitoes as a pool out of the trap.
I understand.
Okay, okay, I was saying, I've had some confusion about that language in the past and I want to make sure that that was clear. Yes, we are going to be testing the, like I said, the Asian tiger mosquitoes as the ones we're concerned about in Pennsylvania. We are going to be testing them when we get, I believe the number is fifty or more individuals in a trap, we will be testing those. So that's a pretty high bar, but I'm sure that it will happen, especially if we're doing more intensive searching for them. So we will be testing some for the virus, yes.
I'm assuming that so far to date, not a single mosquito in Pennsylvania has been found to be tainted with Zika virus?
No, but at this point, I'm not sure that any testing has been done.
Yes.
Yeah, but that is starting, July first is when this grant is to have started and we're going to be doing some, so I don't, I don't know, so some of the, the work is going to be kind of a back work, but I don't know that they have done any of the testing yet at the DEEP. But I would assume that from this point forward, if pools of that size get out there, they will be tested.
And I just wanted to follow up. From your previous presentation, do I understand that when it freezes, that the Zika virus would then go away because they cannot survive in our climate?
That seems most likely, that again, there are so many unknowns that I'm hesitant to say anything too, too exact. But yes, because we don't believe that the virus is passed from the adult to the offspring, the Asian tiger mosquito overwinters in the egg stage in Pennsylvania, so all the adults will die. That's different than West Nile, those mosquitoes do overwinter as adults, but for the Asian tiger mosquito, they're overwintering only as eggs. So as long as the virus has not passed to those eggs, which is, again, as far as we understand, has not happened, Zika virus would have to be reintroduced into Pennsylvania every year if it's going to be spread. So that is a positive amongst all the negatives.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hulte, did you give some total?
Yes, it's $24,268.50.
The DEEP, is that where it's at?
Thank you for those clarifications and answers, it's a, you know, very relevant topic, a lot of public information to come out. And I forget whether we made a motion about it.
I will make a motion to accept the, or support the application for the Zika virus control grant.
I think we're actually accepting the grant, right? Or are we making application?
Accepting. I, the, the application process kind of happened in the background.
So would you like to amend your motion to accept the grant?
Yes.
I'll second that motion as amended.
Motion is second to accept the grant. If all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved. David, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
See you at the fair.
I'm disappointed, I thought we'd have a big Zika model. Model, wasn't it? One that carries the.
Your predecessor used to.
He does, fuzzy is still somewhere around the office, but he's a loser. So if I can find him, if I can find him, he'll, he'll make it appear.
Keep looking.
I don't know the voice.
Very good. All right, can I undertake a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Stand adjourned, thank you very much.